Ah, here he comes.
He's gonna make big decisions without me.
Oh, he will get it. That cost you twenty dollars.
What?
That cost you twenty dollars.
Okay, I'll owe you.
No, no. The voucher don't have to pay you.
No, I saved us twenty dollars. Oh, Lord. I hadn't thought about that.
I don't think about them when I miss them.
Oh.
The new treasurer will thank you.
Meeting is gonna be called to order at six o'clock. Okay. If you have an agenda, let up a roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Bensy?
Here.
Mr. Funes-Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
Now, item two is our civil reflections. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. However, I'm gonna ask you, if you're in a moment of silence, if you will please keep issues in your thoughts while I'm here. So, I would appreciate that. So, Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to agree, should we be talking about this? Okay, we're gonna have the approval of the agenda. However, I have to change it. So, anybody who can change it? Make one change now, but anybody else, yes. Okay.
On fourteen, items for action, I believe some of this was discussed before, so we should be having a number of those put on the page.
I didn't hear ya.
Sorry. On fourteen, new business, I think some of those, and I think, if anybody knows more than I do about that, please chip in, that some of those were already discussed, and I'm new here. Are they not old? Why are they new?
Which letter are you discussing?
D.
Closed session?
Yeah.
What's your question, does it need to be closed?
Yeah, that there should be under, uh, new business, or not, old business, not new business, perhaps. I don't know.
So, you wanna move that from new business to old business?
Yes.
Or unfinished business, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, go ahead, do what you were...
Regina, how you moving?
I'm not clear on what you are doing off.
Okay, let me rescind it.
Okay.
Scratchy notes.
Scratchy. I have scratchy notes, too. All right, what I'm looking at is what we've discussed for senior services, E G, under which we actually have page three. And I would like to move that to, okay, which one are you on?
You're talking about G?
Page, page three, if that's what I know. Yes, where is the request by the senior services advisory board?
Thirteen B.
So, it would be G. I'd like to move it to page two, under A, so you would have under your conditional approval. Nope, that's, that's G. G, move it to under A.
It's gotta be under.
So, it would be B, that's what it would be. A, it would be thirteen B, A. No, thirteen B, B. Okay, you follow it, page three.
So, you wanna move G to B?
I wanna move G to B, to A, B.
Why?
B, B, B. Because I'd like to hear it, no, I wanna move it up sooner than to have it later. That's my request. The second request has to do with your resolutions, D and E.
Resolution, which?
One number.
That also would be thirteen. It's the only two we have on those resolutions. And I would like to table them until March sixth.
Where are you at now, again? Where are you, sorry?
Page three, no, that's good.
Page three?
D and E resolution. I would like to table them, in other words, remove them from the agenda, will table them until March sixth.
Why?
My reasons for this is, it's kind of an interesting question, I figured it'd be asked. I am the senior assessor, chief assessor, for Board of Review. Those resolutions, both of them, would be what, two oh three and two oh two, had not been discussed. I have no clue what those were about, so I was never informed either by staff, well, what's my staff? By our assessor or by our super, our staff and our superintendent for these resolutions that they're asking. So, my point being that because I happen to be the senior or the chief assessor, those should have been discussed with me before they were put on the agenda. I have no clue what those are gonna do. So, my point would be to remove them until our, table them until January sixth, or March sixth, not January. March sixth, which is the Monday, that's our next meeting. And hopefully, in that time, the assessor will discuss with me what it is that those resolutions are supposed to be doing.
She explained it to us last meeting, what they did.
No, what, what she did, I mean, she explained them, it wasn't to me. I did not understand what was said.
Okay.
You got it?
Why didn't you ask questions?
So, why would I ask questions? I'm looking at this to be voted on, and I didn't get a chance to actually read them until they were put in this time.
But they were in the packet last time.
Okay. Let me try it one more time, Brian. Let me try to explain.
Please do.
I hope you get it. Because the assessor had not discussed with me personally what these were, I did not have a chance to read them. After I'd read them, I had questions. So, my point is, these resolutions, which won't necessarily impact, because we meet the seven.
Has Beth been on vacation?
No, she hasn't.
So, in the two weeks since you read them, you couldn't ask Beth the questions?
More time for her to be able to come and explain to me what these resolutions are doing.
It sounds like you want people to come to you, but you're unwilling to go to them.
I know that's what you think I would sound like.
It is, but please, if that's not the case, say so.
All I'm saying to you is, I don't understand it. So, if I don't understand it, that's up to you guys.
I think that's fair, Mary. What I don't understand is, in the two weeks since it was introduced, why you didn't ask any questions?
Why didn't she come to me and say?
Cause she didn't know that you didn't understand it.
Oh, I think she did.
So, she reads your mind that you don't understand it, and she's supposed to come to your office?
You reading everybody else's mind. I'm not gonna argue with you about it. This is the place. I'm asking to change.
This is the place. This is the place where we are discussing the agenda. That is exactly what we're supposed to do.
I'd like to have these removed until January sixth.
Is it gonna affect our clientele at all, our people?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
Well, I would, it will affect them?
When is our Board of Review?
Order review.
March seventh, and I am the secretary. So, I'm just telling you. So, it's entirely up to you. That's my, that's my request.
So, put it into a motion.
So, my motion is, you want both, my motion is to move G, which is the request by the Senior Services Advisory Board to hire an architect, to B. That's my first request. The second request is to table until March sixth, the resolutions that deal with this letter of protest, as well as the failure to file. Those are my motions. Do I get a second?
Second.
I have a second, so we need to vote.
I have discussion?
Go ahead, you've already been discussing.
May I discuss some more?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I don't think we should move these resolutions because they may affect the Board of Review in March.
And I'm telling you, they will not affect our Board of Review in March.
You just told us you did not know if they would affect the Board of Review in March.
To my, best of my knowledge, these have nothing to do, other than if you, it's up to you. I'm not gonna argue with you. That's my.
I think they should be voted on separately.
I agree.
So, my amendment then will be altered if you prefer that they be.
I think the senior center should be voted on its own merit, and the other two should be on their merit.
That's what you, well, it's.
That's what I'm, I'm amending that.
I have no issue with either one of those.
Okay.
So, we need a roll call for the request, well, first of all, is that okay?
Roll call?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna do the first one.
We're gonna do separate.
We're gonna move up the request by Senior Service Advisory Board.
Why am I doing that?
I'm confused by that, too.
So, Judy can go home.
What are you doing here?
No, I, I.
I'm, I'm just requesting to change the agenda.
I'm just gonna vote. Go ahead.
And go ahead, because Al said to vote.
Okay, so we're gonna vote for the first one?
Yes.
Um, roll call vote, um, Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes-Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you. So, that's the first one.
Well, the second one is to remove D and E until March sixth. So, table them until March sixth.
Cheryl, you open with that?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Bensy?
No.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes-Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, no.
So, we're gonna have a motion to accept the agenda as amended, and, well, I should ask, did you declare yours?
Yeah, I have, no, I got my check, scratch your, fourteen, uh, D, I'd like to table that.
Fourteen D.
Fourteen, capital B, lowercase b. For one, one person here, I don't know, I guess everybody else knows a lot more about all this than I do, but I have not been exposed to any of this agreement or whatever, so I'd like to table it.
None of us have been exposed to that, Sherri.
It's, what's a closed session's for?
Talk about the fire chief's contract.
She's asking to table?
D.
Fourteen D.
We've extended his contract to cover this time, and so we've gotta do it.
Yeah, we have to do this. Okay, it'll be covered. I'll call. You can give a second on that. Let me move second.
Oh, the request to, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, you can give a second.
So, if you're going to second it, go ahead.
No, I'm on second.
Then I'll second it. So, that leaves it open for discussion.
When does the extension to the fire chief's contract go through?
March thirty first.
Okay. And your intention in putting the action on there is that if we come out of closed session, we can or cannot, if we want?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we don't have to take action out of the closed session?
What if the action was for me to work with legal counsel, if it was, whatever it was?
Yeah, I think we should keep it, Sherri, just to allow us to, whatever happens back there, we can take action. And if we take it off, we can't take any action on that. We don't have to take action, but we could.
Yeah, I certainly, I'm not aware of anything going on at all, so I've been left out of, and maybe you guys don't know anything either, but I sure don't, and I'm one of the trustees, and so nobody knows anything about contracts or anything.
We've extended it by thirty days, that's it.
I didn't know this.
Three months.
Three months, I'm sorry.
I haven't been informed, that's why I wanted to table it.
But this happened before you, Sherri. It wasn't something you would have known about.
No, it happened, it happened.
No, it happened.
Oh, it did. Oh, I'm sorry. It felt like it was before you, but it was not.
It was in December before his contract expired.
That makes sense, sorry.
I thought we voted on a four-year contract, and that was to be done.
No, I.
And just the chief of police.
I'll call a question, let's move.
Is this a, is there any discussion?
Read the motion.
Okay. Ms. Kellerman made a motion, and Ms. Howe made a second, to remove fourteen, capital B, lower D, action item related to fire chief employment agreement. To remove it from the agenda. Okay. Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Bensy?
No.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes-Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, no. Ms. Howe?
To remove it, yes.
I move approval of the agenda as it has been amended.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Mr. Funes-Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have several tasks, but the next item would be disclosure of conflict of interest? I see none. So, we have public statement, one. Anybody no takers?
Yeah.
There's one.
I just wanted to make a public service announcement. I know you're all on pins and needles to find out what happened, and it is under old business, actually, but in regards to the January seventeenth special meeting we had here, I spoke with the Clinton County Attorney Commission today, and he did state for all of us to know that he has initiated legal proceedings to get an official easement over county property for the purposes of the Parkway Trail. Just so you can put that, put your minds at ease. I know you guys are all really wondering about what was happening there, and that's under our C word commitment. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Look who came home.
Is anybody here? Public county, state, federal, or other agency? Okay. They don't see any. Consent agenda, whoops.
Is this still public comment?
Still, well, still public comment. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say thank you for taking this up on the agenda today. I know it's been a long time coming for our facility to hopefully be approved. I did bring some, uh, interiors, this is a mock-up of what the interior's gonna look like. There's already paint on the wall inside, so it is coming together, and we're working hard to do, ask it a better job than the designers have done here. So, I just wanted to leave these here with you all, so you can see what it's gonna look like, if you want to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else? Now, we'll go to items with the county, the state, et cetera. There doesn't seem to be anybody here, so we'll do the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Does it seem to be in the session? Take the vote. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes-Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion in the second.
Prove it.
Thank you.
Okay, it seems our next one is item eight, which is our amendments, or minutes for the Board of Trustees meeting February sixth.
Mary, sorry. Can I, can I just interject something? I'm, uh, police and fire amendments, that they made a hundred, one thousand two hundred and sixty runs in January. That's an awful lot of runs that you're asking our people to run, that are, that are on call.
Will you say that number again, Al?
One thousand two hundred and sixty runs.
Jeez.
For the fire department?
Yeah.
Although we already accepted them.
Yeah, I just wanted you to, for anybody that didn't happen to read them.
All right, we have the minutes for the Board of Trustees.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' regular meeting of February sixth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
Second.
Ms. Wilson?
You did that rather quickly, but go right ahead, try it again. Are you a yes or a no?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
No, you didn't. That's okay.
Sorry, guys.
That's why I said it went rather quickly. Uh, for me, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on item nine, which is approval of the vouchers for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
For two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Doesn't seem, shoot.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes-Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item ten, which is the treasurer's report. There doesn't seem to be any. So, we'll go to committee appointments, which item eleven, there are none. Item twelve, for those of you who have your agenda, township committee reports. There's an update, prepare open to county.
I wish I could deliver better news, I, about the deliberations of the Clinton County Broadband Task Force. Before you is a letter, it's a four-page letter outlining some concerns that I drafted, and provided to our attorney commissioner, Representative Boyd Washington. If you read the first part, the bullet points, I'll read those, this is public comments, but everything else on the remaining pages are documentation of the concerns. So, so just as a reminder, I, about two years ago, I set up a board for a township broadband task force. A bunch of work went into that work. When the county formed their broadband task force, we decided to put our eggs in that basket, on the assumption that they would be a better, more competitive applicant for grant funds. And so, part of that process was, I, the county developed the task force, and then they issued an RFP, a request for proposals from internet service providers. They received seven applications. Frontier AC/Net, Stellar Homeworks, and there's a couple of other smaller ones. The, the letter outlines concerns related to the process for selecting their partner. So, the county did select a partner. They decided to go to Frontier Communications as their partner to apply for federal funds. So, the issues that I have are, one, Frontier is a current provider in Bath, and on our own township broadband survey, they were the lowest rated in terms of the quality and satisfaction. They have the lowest speeds of any other provider in Bath Township. There was a concern there. I did a little bit of research, you can see the research on the remaining pages. So, Frontier currently has the Fitch credit rating of BB minus. They have a Better Business Bureau, they're not accredited by that business, Better Business Bureau. Their score is an F. And then they have something like close to two hundred million dollars in commitments to build out their infrastructure throughout the United States based on either legal agreements or pre-legal agreements. That includes fifteen million dollars, the agreement with the state of Michigan, to expand and improve their, their infrastructure. The bullet points I wanted to share are these. The Clinton County Broad, broadband task force had no meaningful voice in the ISP partner recommendation process. A shadow committee of county staff was established outside of the task force's knowledge. This committee's deliberations were non-transparent, secretive, and not revealed until Plant Moran. Issued a report with set of recommendations. So, part of how this unfolded was the county hired Plant Moran and Guide House Consulting to support the process. Plant Moran really did do a financial audit of the providers, to make a set of recommendations. It was in their reports. I don't know if you've received this. If not, I can share this with you. They outlined a variety of different things, but as you can see in one of my bullet points, Plant Moran, I, does not have a fully accurate set of analyses, in my opinion, so. But that trans, that shadow committee of township staff provided no details about the applications or the maps, I'll comment on that in a second. And so, there was no information given to the task force, which is an issue because we have, we're not quite sure what is being provided. Again, I'll talk about that in a second. So, serious concerns, I, were brought up to the task force, as well as to the Ways and Needs Committee, as well as to the Clinton County Commission meeting, not just by myself, but by another broadband task force member in Victor Township, about the concerns related to Frontier. Victor Township, between others, locations served by Frontier, so they, they also have that experience. Some of the background of this is that between Victor and Bath Township, we allocated eighty percent of the township level funds to the county. So, our commitment was for four hundred thousand dollars. Victor was for three hundred and, I think, sixty-five thousand dollars. So, that, that accounted for eighty percent of the township funds that were committed to the partnership. So, one of the big concerns outside of just whether or not Frontier has the capacity to do a quality build-out and maintain service and not provide fraudulent practices in terms of their work, is the fact that of the locations that they proposed, seven hundred and forty-two households were being proposed to be served in, between Bath, Victor, and all the townships. Seven hundred and forty-two. We have more households just in Bath than seven hundred and forty-two that are. We have more households just in Bath than 742 that are underserved or not served by high-speed broadband. I just found out today that if you go to the Clinton County GIS mapping website, the Fetch GIS, there is a layer that you can choose that shows the locations. When I was told that, I immediately looked. I had to have Karen look at it just to make sure that I wasn't blind. There are zero locations in Bath being served by this proposal. So again, we as a township allocated $400,000 to this partnership. We're receiving zero service. If you take a close look at that map, you'll see some weird things like they're proposing locations in fields, locations in ponds. It's kind of a mess. I will say that there is some plus or minus in terms of GIS mapping that there may be actual occasions, but it does not look all that great. Again, read the letter and make up your own mind related to that. So with that said, a couple of things I have to leave after this. I'm going to do a little pitch. State Cross School, we're writing another grant application for funding. We're seeking $45,000 to continue the work that we started a year ago, two years ago. So I encourage this board to continue supporting the State Cross School project. It's got, we've been funded for two different grants. This will be our third grant that we're hopeful of getting funding for. This round, we'll expand services to high school, not just elementary and middle schools. So do you have any questions for me related to this?
Do you have time? Because I've got three. Who else is?
I can have time.
So I'll, I'll try to make it really quick. So the plant, where's the ad hoc committee that the Planning Commission created with broadband?
That is currently not functioning, so.
So that's not the same as?
That's different from the county task force.
Right, so we have three, we have two in Bath and then one from county.
There was one in Bath that dissolved because the county started its work.
Right.
We put our investment there.
So the ad hoc just hasn't been needed?
Correct.
So it's, it's separate. So you went in a different direction than the Planning Commission?
When the county initiated their task force and their planning, we decided to, as a board, vote to partner with them on this work.
Right, well, that didn't, that didn't have any, but that's okay. So we're saying both, basically the ad hoc doesn't exist. The Planning Commission dissolved it.
Recommendations, we reconstitute that task force to help us navigate. I would say that there are some opportunities. Stellar Broadband, AC/DC net, and Comcast are very interested in building out in Bath Township. There may be some good partnerships there. We may want to think about pulling our ARPA funds that we allocated to the county to see if we can invest or partner with one of the ISPs that is interested in working with that.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm just asking what happened to the ad hoc committee. This Plant Moran, who is that?
Plant Moran is a large Lansing-based, I think Lansing-based accounting firm.
Oh, okay, it's a accounting firm.
I believe they do the county accounting.
Okay. Okay, and then you say, ask if there's anybody else on the task force that has the same issues that you have? Are you the only one?
So Nicole Vickers, I believe is her name. She's a Victor Township board member. She's on that. She and I have met with Dwight Washington to express our concerns, so.
So there is, on the task force, there are two of you that have issues with it?
Correct.
Okay, last question. Anybody else that wants to holler? When you mentioned that we have zero service, who's getting the service in Bath Township isn't getting it?
So they're about, so the way that the county divided the county, there's three different service areas. There's an eastern, or western district, a central district, and an eastern district. We're in the eastern district, and so we're clumped with Victor and Ovid Townships. So Ovid has around 400 households that are being served. Victor has 350-ish. Again, Bath has zero, like the one I can tell. There are some houses, locations on the border, Victor and Bath. These are the locations I mentioned.
Okay, so Victor and Ovid are getting services, but Bath is not?
Correct.
Okay.
The central area, if you go to the GIS mapping site, you can see the density and distribution of proposed service locations.
And of course Victor's concerned. Well, go ahead. That answer, thank you.
The, how, how much of a job will the $400,000 that we have, that we give to the, we've said we would give to the county if it worked out, and we can take it back? I realize that.
I don't know. It depends. There's a lot of factors that go into it in terms of the existing infrastructure permitting, the distance between homes and the like.
Yeah.
And so I think this is why reconstituting a local task force or committee, whether it's the Planning Commission or something, however it looks to think through these things. I think having conversations with the ISP, internet service providers, I think makes a lot of sense. The providers were asked to provide in-kind support, and that in-kind support ranged up to 50% of the costs. So I think there's opportunities there, and it's a question of what are the various needs. Comcast would be different from Stellar Broadband.
Would you head that committee? If we get it going again?
I'm tired.
I know you're tired, but we need, we need leadership.
If, if, I'm more than happy to serve on that committee. I would like someone on the board or someone on the Planning Commission to share that committee. So, but I will help with the transition. And if you guys say you want me to represent that, I will serve, so.
You have one more, very quick, very quick.
I'm on the Planning Commission, I'll volunteer, volunteer.
Volunteer, volunteer? When you say zero for services that we're giving, do we have broadband on the south end?
So, so when I say zero, this is the proposed service locations that's, that's the partnership will apply for when they go after federal funds. So there's, I forget the name of the, there's a Robin Grants, and I apologize for not remembering what Robin stands for. That's, that's a grant opportunity that is currently active and has a due date in the next few weeks.
Do we have broadband on the south end?
So we have broadband throughout the township, and so
Throughout the township.
The south end has stronger, faster, more reliable service than the north end. We knew that. There are, I believe WOW serves portions of the northern township. If you ask, sometimes people are happy, sometimes
They're not.
People are not.
No, understand that. So we do have broadband in Bath, but not with this particular grant, or $400,000?
Yeah.
That's a high end of what we have allocated for them, for Clinton County, to be able to bring broadband into, into the county?
Yeah, just a friendly amendment that it's, I would, I would focus on those homes that don't have broadband. So the unserved or underserved. When I say underserved, they have less than 100 megabits per second download speed and 20 megabits upload speeds. And so I would say when we look.
Would have broadband on the north end?
So we had, so the way that we came up with the decision is that we estimated the number of households within the proposed service area, and then we matched Victor's per household match. That added up to about $200,000. What we then said was that because we had concerns about whether or not the county would serve Bath, we made a contingent second allocation, that contingency being that's actual service in Bath Township.
That's what I'm saying, because we already have it in the south end. What we're looking at is the north end.
Just the north end, yes.
Middle and the north.
Yes.
I divide it in two.
And the western portion, I guess.
And so Victor has it, Olive has it, but Bath, through this company, we don't have any, but we do have broadband on the south end through WOW or whoever is the provider, the ISPs?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, no? Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This may be a question that's already been asked. Supervisor Howe has placed a recommendation that you continue to serve on the Clinton County Broadband Task Force, and just so.
We appreciate you.
Okay, so is there another question?
No, he's done.
Are you done?
Am I done?
I don't know. That's what she's like, are you done?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll serve more questions. I do, I'm just going to take that one. I want to offer my gratitude and thanks to Bath, please inquire for their service related to MSU. We had aid officers who responded, one of which was a team lead for SWAT. That officer broke down one of my office doors, so I have beef with him, but I very much appreciate that work. What I heard was that they ran, that team in particular ran, ran 5.6 miles that night. And so they're all over campus, it was a mess. Bath Township does have many students. They're going to live in township, so this is something to keep in mind, so.
Thank you. I'm hoping you'll be able to send any questions, because we're going to hold.
Not for him. What? Whoever's driving a red SUV, that was your car in the lot making noise. Carla, can you hear it?
Oh. Somebody has to go to yours, because I didn't hear it.
Miles did.
He's sitting by the window.
There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, is Miles into the car?
No, it might be him. There's people in there.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you again, Jason, for that update.
Thank you.
I'm on 12B, which is mine. It says the 23 Board of Trustees and Committee meeting date calendar. So those of you who have the agenda, what I'm looking at here is the Board of Review, Public Art, and Senior Services Advisory Board. Those are dates that you have that are not on our calendar that was submitted. So this request is you voted for the calendar. Hold out. Thank you. And on that calendar, the Public Art Committee, I think meets at a different time, is what that did, but that committee basically dissolved itself. So what this is looking at is March 17 to start. That would be the third Friday of each month.
Every, every third Friday?
Every third Friday at 1:00. The Board of Review, of course, is March, July, and December.
And that one was there.
That would be added to the calendar. The third one, the Senior Advisory Board, they're looking to change theirs, which they have, they voted on it, for Wednesday of each month at 1:00, starting March 15.
Which one is that?
That would be, what is that, third, or is June?
Sitting down at the podium.
Third Wednesday or second Wednesday? Second Wednesday.
The second is the third in here.
Let's see, Senior Advisory, March 15. So that's the third one.
They have it, you have it written here?
Yes.
So, yeah, the third Wednesday of each month.
Yeah, I think that's, we changed, that was changed for the next Wednesday, so it'd be the third Wednesday, my understanding, at 1:00.
From three to one.
Three to one?
They were meeting at three.
Oh, they were, yeah, they're meeting, looking to add to the calendar. So I don't know if you need to re-accept, because you only, technically you only accept your dates. The others you put in for information. So if I'm wrong on that, please let me know, which I'm sure you would. But these, these three dates, so you have your Board of Review, which is March, December, March, July, and December. Your Public Art, that would end up being their official meeting, first one would be March 17 at 1:00. And then they'll meet every month thereafter. Senior Services, I'm sure that's, that would be the 15th. The 15th day of each month at 1:00. That's, yes, yes, it is permanent, as permanent as what that is. Yes. Okay.
It's the third Wednesday?
It's the third Wednesday.
Because we, we printed the second.
They want to change.
They want to change that.
Oh, they want to change that too?
Yes.
All right, I got you.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. As soon as that calendar comes up, because again, my assumption, this is, it is, is that you vote technically for your own dates and you've done that. So we'll be looking for a new calendar with these changes. Okay. I think that takes care of that. So now we're on item 13, which is unfinished business. And there is no items for discussion. That's not items for action. A conditional approval.
Thank you. We have with us tonight from Fabi Schultz, Lindsay Gergel, I hope you're saying your last name correctly, Lindsay, and Matthew Cuchel to help us through this item tonight.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, members of the board. So this is the conditional approval action item in your recreational marijuana process. So just to kind of give a little background of that process and kind of where we are in the application, and then what sort of the action item is for you to consider. So in your recreational marijuana process, first thing, of course, would be to receive an application, which you did, from Summerized Forest LLC. We reviewed that application. I'll touch on that in a second. The next step in your process is then conditional approval. So this is a conditional permit that then opens the door and permits that applicant to go to your Planning Commission to ask for a special use permit, and that needs to be done within 60 days. Then the Planning Commission reviews that, just as they would your other special use permits, make a recommendation, it comes back to the township board, township board issues the special use permit. That's going to then solidify your, your existing business. There may be less of that there, but they still need zoning approval for what is a different land use, medical marijuana versus recreational marijuana. And then finally, they actually issue. So that's your final issuance, and we're all the way back up at essentially step number two. The initial conditional approval, which opens the door to some more type of zoning procedures. So what's then happened up to this point is that they submitted their application. There's some differences between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana on the state statute side. You only receive one application, which simplifies the process for you. We did review that application. We submitted some summary materials to you there. It was all a little bit different from our office. But in essence, it's our opinion that they've now submitted a complete application. You'll see that there were a couple of updates. That's unsurprising. As I assist communities throughout the state and evaluate these applications, I have yet to see an applicant be 100% permitted on a very good drive. So not surprising that there were a few things we asked for some more information on. But then that information has now been transmitted to you. It's a township record. It is a confidential record. But it is this board's determination that says, hey, we have enough information. We're content. We like what we see and we understand where our attorneys are telling us. We believe it is from the applicant. You can still make those requests for additional application. Then your action include both whatever they're throwing in processing as well as whatever they bring in from third parties. So approving, passing motion to grant conditional approval for those three uses with or with whatever reason is identified by the board, and then there are some, a few processes and other things we talked about. That's the route we go, the route we go down. That's route we go, route we go down. So that's a really quick, uh, blow through what you've put in place, how you've got here, and what you have in front of you as a proposed, uh, item for action tonight.
I have one question. One always leads to two or three, so I'll start it. When you talk about the application process, we're talking the one application that came in, or are you talking numerous applications?
I'm talking about the one application that came in, yeah.
Okay, so it is open to others?
There was an application window that was open to others, uh, and no one else applied.
Oh. What window would that have been, do you know? Time frame?
I do.
Okay.
It was October or November, I think, I think it was November.
Okay. So it was open at one time anyway for that short period, that two weeks?
A month-long noticing period prior to that as well. We noticed it in the newspaper four times. Yeah, we went above and beyond.
Yeah, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Okay, so you noticed was four weeks, and then the window was open for two.
We noticed four weeks out, and then two weeks out. Multiple times on the first notice, multiple times on the second notice.
Okay.
And included in that notice was also anyone that was even interested in this land use was collect, their emails were collected over a period of two years, it's an interest and part email list, and they were also directly emailed at notice as well.
And no one, there was no?
That is correct, there was one.
Okay, no, thank you. I'm sure I'll come up with another one from here and there. Is there anybody else, you obviously, oh, Brian?
So you said the application is confidential.
Correct.
Is it confidential to us as well?
The township board can.
We can ask for more information, but we don't have the application, so I don't know if we need more information.
Right, right, yeah, I see, uh, a question here. So to address perhaps a procedural gap, um, with the summary of information that has been provided, right, rather than a bogey down to hundreds of pages, um, so, and, and perhaps I have this wrong, because I am sort of, you know, trying to speak into interface with staff, and, um, sort of like, you'll hear about this in, in the national press, right, they'll have, they'll have all the documents and they'll be in some reading room specifically. We wouldn't put it in your packet like this.
Right.
Because that, that obviously goes out to everyone. So kind of how that, I, I admit ignorance to the mechanics of, you know, if you wanted to see the ownership structure, right, or, you know, what's the LLC here, or where's the minority state, you know, the landowner or something. If you wanted to see something specifically, I, unfortunately, I don't know mechanically, procedurally, how you, how you get that, but I'm, I'm happy to answer questions about the, the application materials. And Ms. Gergel, um, did a lot of the heavy lifting for us in the office, so she's intimately familiar with, um, with what they submitted and, and why we made the determination we made that it was to be administered.
I'm happy to answer any questions about the application as well.
Well, I think part of the question, I'll dovetail off of what Trustee Ewan Bliss said. Why didn't we have the application? The application? We have one, right?
Um, there were binders that were forwarded to legal counsel for them to review, and we've, we've not received those back, so I don't know that we have them here on site. If that's something that you wish to see before you vote, um, we could obtain those and have a process made available where you could view it perhaps in the conference room.
They're actually in the vault.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
How many did you vote?
They brought back the day they picked them up.
So that's since.
That's what I like to hear.
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that.
They took them, scanned them, brought them right back that day.
Okay.
So they've been in there since?
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that. I, I thought they were still in the legal council.
Yeah.
They're in there.
So nobody knew they were in there, right?
They're in the vault.
They're in there, yeah.
So if you, if anybody wanted to see them, we would, um, have a process for you sitting and reviewing the information.
Well, I sure don't wanna hold this up, because they've been going a long time.
Yeah, and that's why the competitive review was handled by legal counsel.
That was one of the things, I guess, I, which is a good question. Surely, obviously, we've had it, but I thought you brought up a good point.
Thank you.
With the application, because that is a question of the confidentiality that we can't put it in our packet, because it no longer would be confident. But I certainly don't wanna hold this up. If there are any questions I have with the, after reviewing it, then obviously I'll say something.
I think that's a good change for the process moving forward. If there was more than one, I think it would matter more than if there's only one. Like, I trust that you've done all the reviews, and I'm not saying I would find anything of particular note, but if there was more than one, it might be nice to put our own hands on it.
When you know the final decision is made, we could arrange for anybody who's interested in looking at it.
Cause this gotta move back through.
I don't, well, it's there.
I'll review it after this decision is done, and if there's any questions, then obviously it can be done. But I certainly do not want to hold this up. This has been way too long.
I've been thinking about, so I was moving in, in the direction the superintendent was going, that you do still have final permit approval, right, this is just conditional, so there's that review period, which is gonna be extensive. The other thing you can do is, is, uh, if, as I'm, I'm sensing a desire that I'm, you know, wondering whether there's questions coming, waiting until the very final permit, just to put that in, um, some clarity for both the board and the applicant.
Well, that's understood, and I, I really, really appreciate that, I've heard that before. But come back and say those conditions are met, and it's okay. So if this goes, maybe Sad can answer this. If this goes, that means that they'll start. When you put conditions on it, that means they don't start until the thirty day.
Well, it's conditional, because it has to go through the rest of the process.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
That's not the answer you were given, that's why I'm interrupting to say, that's why it's conditional.
No.
It has to move through the rest of the process, go to the planning commission and come back to us.
In addition to the condition.
Right, right, and, and in some cases, that might be the case. Here, no, I don't think so. Especially phrasing it in the condition that I propose, which is merely informational gathering.
Right.
There'd be no reason to hold up the next steps in the process, just to be clear that there's some additional information gathered.
Okay. Oh, thank you. All right, this is on this fraction, so it looks like, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Trustee.
I'd like to move, uh, conditional approval of the permit application by Sunrise Forest LLC for adult-use marijuana retail establishment permit.
And a, and a grower Class A and a processor.
Exactly.
So you have to add the Class A.
And a grower Class A and a processor. Sorry, that wasn't on my agenda.
Now, does that also include the retail?
Yes, that's, yeah, the retail, that one was in there.
Was, okay. Can you only second?
I am.
Okay. Do you know? Do you? Okay, no, when you said I am, I thought I had something else to say. Yes, you did, okay. Vote. Yep.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Keon Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rothcrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, calendar, yes? Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Our next one is, you know, they all. We moved it, so, thank you. Well, Sad, you can read those for me.
I'm gonna leave them right here for you.
Thank you.
I'll be on tomorrow.
Really appreciate it. I'm sorry, Judy.
Sorry, good evening. Judy Gardy from the Senior Services Advisory Board. As it says on the agenda, um, we're here to ask for the approval of the architect, Matt Morgan. I will just start by saying, um, if, I'm sure you've read the recommendations from the conversation, and the first recommendation, catalytic recommendation is for, um, looking at expanding the physical space at the senior center, the program that's here, the activities for the residents. I know that every single senior who comes to the senior center absolutely loves our senior center. And the numbers that we're serving are growing all the time. There are new people who come in every week to the senior center. And just with our meal program, we're at capacity most days for, um, for lunch. We had a special Valentine's lunch, and I invited you all to come, and Steve happened to have a retirement party that day right at the same time, so, um, Marie and Sherri came, and I appreciate that, but it's an open invitation for all of you to come to the senior center at any time. I know many of you have, um, eaten the meals that are prepared by, um, the, the cook, the kitchen staff, and they do a wonderful job. So we are now looking at, um, we've had the conversation, we're now looking at expand, looking at bringing in the conversation. He was engaged in the conversation, after the conversation, he walked around the building, uh, inside and outside. He's an architectural designer. He, um, not only will look at the existing facility and maybe if we can improve some of the function of the existing facility, but he'll look at the potential for expanding at the site where we currently are. He will take a deep look at the parking and the availability of parking. And if we were to expand, is the parking there to meet the requirements that are set by the county for parking places based on the, the use of the facility? In addition to the physical space, the catalytic recommendation for number two was to look at staffing and the staffing responsibilities. I will say that, um, we have met with Karen since the conversation. We had a very good open and tight meeting with Karen. Um, we're working on communication. During that meeting, we learned that the coordinator is, um, working part-time onsite and part-time, um, at home. We would encourage Karen to bring that coordinator onsite for the twenty-five hours a week that she's being paid, and encourage those hours that she, um, comes into the office, that she's not working in the office right now in the senior center, that those perhaps be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Another one of the recommendations is that, um, we work on partnerships. I will say that the head of the Clinton County Transit Authority will be in the senior center on Friday to meet with the coordinator and to have lunch with us. She's very eager to talk with our coordinator about how perhaps the county, the transit authority at the county level can better convene, uh, maybe a grouping of people that they would bring into the senior center for lunch and take home after lunch. So, um, we are beginning to work on, uh, increasing the number of partnerships that are available, um, through the senior center to help our, our seniors, um, at this point in time. So, um, right now, we would like to, um, move forward and bring the architect on board so that they can look at the, at the facility and the potential that we have therefore expanding, including the possibility, I mean, including the issue related, issues related to parking. Marie?
Cost.
The architect, um, I think your proposal, his proposal is before he was forty-five hundred dollars for that, he would do the drawings, mechanical, electrical plumbing, plan review, corrections and additions, work with inspectors, do the preliminary plans, the renderings, um, the final plan, the sealed set of commercial drawings. It's a full proposal, yeah.
It is full. In this forty-five hundred, the dollar amount is coming, do you know where from? From where?
We already approved it.
I know, that's what I'm asking, we already approved.
Come out from, um, what is the?
Those are ARPA funding.
ARPA funding.
But we approve more than forty-five?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, that's what I thought. I'm sorry.
I'm still struggling with this request. This board has not yet determined if this is something that we want to do. I think the first step of this should be us as a board determining, is this something we even wanna consider before leading the committee or other, not vote to support the actual expansion later? I think it sends a message to the community and to the seniors that this is moving. But again, we have not had one conversation at this board level about actually expanding the senior center. We also, I, I appreciate the voices represented here, but there's too few voices represented saying that we need an expanded senior center. The numbers that we have, the data that Karen has provided to us, don't support expansion. So I feel like this is, again, step ten in a twelve-step process, and we haven't even started step one. I'm not saying I'm against expansion, uh, this just, it feels like the sort of train has left the station here before we've even decided to support having a train. So I, I, and I don't wanna set the precedent for the Parks Committee to get, uh, you know, an architect to start designing Upton Road and come to us and say, here's Upton Road, Mark, you guys should support this. Or, you know, the farmers market to say, we're gonna build a new pavilion, we've hired an architect, here we go. I think we have to decide we're gonna support a project before we start hiring architects.
And from my point of view, if you don't do this, you're going to know whether you want your expansion or not. That's, I think, for me, that's how I look at it. I really would like the information, so I don't know if that falls into what you're looking at or not. But information is crucial, you can't just really, really say, and we talk about the board, the board has to make a decision, um, what they do. But if they don't have the information, they can't make a true decision. So I'm afraid I support what they're asking, that would be my own. So you, oh, do you should I?
I actually support both of you, but in working, in working through this, it would be really hard for this order to make the recommendation to expand the senior center program only to find out, at the program, excuse me, the building, only to find out that the parking lot won't meet the needs of the expansion. So I'm in support of this, because this architect's gonna tell us how much parking I need to service this architectural, uh, drawing, okay? And if I don't have enough parking, well then, as Ryan said, you've got step ten, step twelve, then there's no reason to make an expansion on this building, because I don't have enough parking available to service this building. And that's the, the thing that I came to my conclusion on, is I actually need this study before I vote on the expansion, because I don't know if there's enough existing park, parking to support this expansion. And that has to be, you know, we, we can get the cart in front of the horse real easy or either direction, but I think that's part of this architectural work that he'll be doing, is yes, you have enough parking spaces, no, you don't have enough parking spaces. Cause there's only so much place to park out there.
Trustee Kellerman?
Yes, I agree. We need more information to make a decision. And what Doak said that was great is there's a need for exercise room. They could put outside kitchens, freezers, and whatever for more food if it comes to that. But we need input, we need information to vote on something. I think the need is there, our people need it, but we need to know what we're voting on, so we need the architect. My opinion.
So I, I appreciate both of those thoughts, but I, I sort of think about it like my house. I don't need an architect to come and draw me pictures to know if I want to expand my house or not. I have to want to expand my house in order to bring an architect on. So I appreciate that we wanna know about parking, but if we don't expand the building, we won't need to expand parking. So again, that's a step ahead of things. So I, I just really, really struggle. We have not had any conversations as a board about this. So I appreciate that we want information. I'm not even saying we should vote, I'm saying we haven't even voiced yes or no that four out of the seven of us would even support the concept. So if there's not four votes to even support the concept of expansion, why would we hire an architect to start drawing up pictures? Cause that, that has to be the. Because that has to be the threshold. I don't think that committees should be pitching big projects that the board has not indicated any support to. I think we have to have discussions about that. This is what should have happened when Karen asked us to do strategic planning. This is the type of stuff that would have come out of that. Do we want to expand buildings? Do we want new parks? Do we want new ideas? And then are we willing to put money behind them? Because if we do this, then we should expect every other committee to come here asking us to hire people to start drawing things up so that they can pitch us big projects. And if that's what we want to do, I think that's a fair thing. But what I don't want to happen is the Parks Committee to put the same request in in a month and us say, well, wait, we might not want to park, so we're not going to do that. So I think we have to make sure we're, we know we're setting a precedent here.
Okay. I think the precedent's already been set. When we voted, when it was passed for the Grand Rapids Committee to come in to tell us what our parks should be doing or how we should be developing Bath Township, that is the cart before the horse kind of thing.
But that's not what they're doing, Marie.
But that's exactly what they're doing.
It isn't, though. They're not coming here to tell us what we should. Marie, just let me, let me say, they're not coming in to tell us what we should be doing. They're coming here to listen to us and put together our, our report. It's exactly what we hired Doak to do, to listen to the community and put it in writing. They're not coming here to tell us you should build this here or there.
So what I'm trying to say to you is this is very similar to that. You need the architect, you need the information to be able to make a decision as to whether or not you want to fulfill. A hole is not going to be dug until this group says it's okay, dig it. The architect is there to say, yes, you have parking, no, you don't have parking. Yes, your kitchen fits, no, it doesn't, you need to fix it. We need to have more room divided up within the center itself. Those are issues that I think all of us on this board have to look at. So I'm very much in support of the architect being able to come in and say, this is something that maybe the township would look at, that they'd want to expand. You can't make the decision without having more information.
But I can tell you if I have any intention of it. If there's not four people here who are even interested in the concept, it doesn't matter.
Can we vote on the concept if we, right now, I make a motion that we vote on the concept that we would like to investigate expansion?
What concept?
I would like to investigate it.
That's what you said.
That's what, exactly, I'm repeating your words.
Right, but what I'm saying is we don't have a concept. So you're saying we would vote on a concept, but we don't have one.
I'm wanting to investigate a concept, to have some desire to expand it, but we need to vote on, do we want to look at that?
I'm willing to have that conversation, Sherri, but we've got no data or information, like, there's nothing.
That's what the architect's for.
No, it's not. I'm asking, how many people show up per week? Right now, we're not selling out. So why would we expand in terms of a concept?
This is our public ask for.
Thirty people. That's less than 1% of the entire population.
They're the ones that use it.
Sure, but the rest of us have to pay for it.
Like anything else, I have to pay for the library and I never use it.
I don't run the library, so, good point.
Well, that's an example.
Go down there and protest them, that has nothing to do with this.
That's an example. You are making terms and saying things that aren't true.
What did I say that's not true?
I don't protest, I have no reason to protest.
I said, go down there and protest, Marie. I didn't say, Marie, may I finish? I did not say you were protesting. I said, go down there and protest. So can you please apologize for saying that I was lying?
For you lying?
You just accused me of lying.
I accused you of making a statement that wasn't necessarily true.
No, you said, I was lying. You just said it, Marie. No, hold on, no, Joe, no. I'd like an apology.
I am sorry if I said you were lying.
Thank you, I accept that, I appreciate that, Marie.
No, I know he does have a question.
Yes, he does, thank you.
Fifteen years ago, I started at the Senior Center. There was 13 to 18 people Monday, Wednesday and Friday. That's all we had. We have got to the point now where we're serving 150 or better at Christmas and Thanksgiving. At the last big event they had, they had 103.
Relative.
Yes. And they are growing. I, my wife has been there, I haven't been because I'm working. But she now, she said, since COVID, it's a whole new batch of people. And it is growing so fast, there's so many new people coming in every day that I think you, you've got to study this and find out. Because we went through the kitchen and that, we had to get the blueprints after you had very well pleaded our case. And I think we have to, I think we need to move ahead on this.
Any other discussion? Let's take a vote.
We got to have a motion. Oh, your motion to study it?
Yes.
I think we just got to go ahead and do it.
We need to have a motion to approve this architectural contract for $4,500. For $4,500. Is there a second for my motion?
I'll second it.
You guys can play, that's okay.
You got to withdraw your motion unless there was a second.
I can withdraw it.
Okay.
I think it would be better to skip that section.
Okay.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fewenfuss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander? Yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
I will say I agree, Ryan, that we do need to have a good discussion of this and I would hope that we can do that.
I know you will have us do that, Judy.
All right, we now are C of 13 unfinished business.
Aren't we on D?
D was that. I really switch. So this should be C.
Okay, this is the mutual agreement. It is our superintendent.
Thank you. I explained this last time we were all together. Interim Chief Gary Smith was here. If you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer at this time.
After the last incident at Michigan State and everything that's going on, I, we need to, with our, everybody be together, all the police departments and fire departments.
Make that motion to approve this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a question, of a discussion other than my own.
Sure.
Does that mean that from what your motion is, trustee Rosecrans, that we will reach out to every other department that?
You have one agreement in front of you right now.
No, what they're saying, if I'm understanding the motion, every department should have a mutual aid agreement. So does that mean that we reach out to all of our?
They have reached out to us in the past.
Okay, so if?
We have agreements with them.
I mean?
This is just a new one.
Why do we? It's a renewal.
It's just a renewal.
Well, I understand it's a renewal, but I guess I'm questioning, we have this agreement, this written agreement with every department?
Not every department, but several.
Okay.
Close to us that can aid us.
So those are the only ones that actually?
We have an agreement with Michigan State.
Because that was my understanding, our mutual agreement was kind of, well, the tri-county area.
We have mutual agreements with East Lansing, we have Meridian and Police Duette Township. This is a, an update from the last agreement.
Okay.
But when other communities call us for mutual aid, we do respond. Whether or without an agreement, we do respond. This outlines the terms under which we respond and where are the guidelines for that response. And if there's to be reversements or other things of that nature, this outlines that.
Okay.
Duette Township has.
Then the motion that you made, so I understand the motion you made, reach out to the other departments?
No, no, that's that we're agreement.
I think he was making a general statement that.
Okay.
The MSU incident.
In writing. And that's what I guess I said.
We've had him before.
Nope, that's, that works for me. Any other discussion?
Mr. Fewenfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander now? Yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes, Ms. Kellerman. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we are now, we'll be on D. 13 unfinished business, it's recommendations for the board project.
Thank you. I reworked the memo and the chart that follows it for the budgeted 2023 with this project recommended at the bottom of this spreadsheet on page 2, showing the amount that this project would cost and then the amount that would need to be amended in the budget. I will also note to you today, the clerk shared with me an agreement for chloride costs at a cost of $60,651.15. I would ask you to approve that as well tonight because it is, I did not have this at the time I put the packet together. This came in today. But it is actually under the estimate that I had been provided previously of $65,000. So I would ask, whatever action you take tonight, you all correct. I didn't do anything.
No, I was just, that's what I was making sure I understood, that you said it was about $5,000 less. So our budget of?
You should put this in at that. We can always put it back in the budget at the end of the year if we don't use it.
As I indicated in the memo, we do not control that cost share. That cost share is controlled by the Clinton County Road Commission. I can't count that on the fact that the entire $95,000 would be applied to this one project. So that's not something that's at our discretion and I would ask you not to count on that money. They will apply it and we will receive the benefit from it, but we are not in charge of applying it.
What's the bottom line of your budget amendment? That's what I guess I thought when you said $5,000 less.
But that's not necessarily what you're asking of us tonight, right? You're not asking us to approve the budget amendment, are you?
Yes.
Yes.
For you to move forward with the Hawk Hollow project as recommended.
Right, but that's different than approving a budget amendment.
It requires a budget amendment. You can't, we wouldn't be able to do it without a budget amendment.
We've done that before. We approve the projects and then you come to us later with a budget amendment.
He's correct.
So Hawk Hollow, you're talking $520,000?
Because ultimately, some of these projects may not get done and you may not have to move that amount of money. Isn't that what happened last year?
I would say that the last major project that you approved did come in cheaper, but I can't guarantee that that will happen this time.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
Previously, you have asked us to move money later because it may not be this amount. Because projects can come in higher or lower or get canceled altogether because the county won't do them.
I can't recall doing that. If you're saying I did, I have. But I think it would be prudent to approve the budget amendment at this time. It's a significant amount of money and to not have it available and move forward with the project, I don't think would be acceptable.
So this money's coming from the general fund?
Correct, general fund fund balance, yes.
Yep. Do we know how much we have in our fund balance for a general fund? Four, five?
Well, you know.
It hasn't changed, Marie.
It hasn't changed since the last audit.
And that's why I'm asking. So obviously, you know, no.
Why not? Everybody knows about how much, but there isn't a real sum. It's about 4 million.
Does that sound about right?
What do you say?
It's 4 million, we have that information, folks, let's not guess. It's 4,741,421. That combines general fund, public safety and non-major governmental funds, fund balance.
So it's for three other?
It is those three numbers combined, those aren't entities, no.
He doesn't have to answer, so.
Answer what? What's the question?
No, he did answer, but by not answering it, you're asking.
How many million?
What's the question?
4,741.
Marie, what's the question?
What's the dollar amount? 4,741.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Four-two-one.
Four-two-one, I had that, that's what I was going to say. Okay.
If you're just asking general fund, Marie, it's 3659963.
So out of that 3.6 million that we have, we're asking for the $373,000 for the roads? That is you're looking for, okay.
But Marie, that's on top of the $500,000 that we've already budgeted to take from that this year.
Well, that's what I was kind of looking at.
600,000.
600,000.
Six hundred?
So it's a total of a million plus.
Because we adjusted.
Well, nine, it'll be, yeah, it'll be a million plus. So out of our 3,659, or four, I'm sorry, or four, 4.7 million, which is basically what that is, we're looking at a million to take out of that, correct? Okay, no, yeah. All right, Joe.
Well, I get frustrated.
I know, say it.
So I am, can I make a motion to accept the road committee's recommendation and do the mill and fill of Hawk Hollow Drive in addition to the other programs that they have, projects that they have recommended along with the approval of the chloride contract for this year? That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, please.
I'm going to be a no on this. I am uncomfortable taking this much money out of the fund balance. This would be almost a million dollars in the roads budget alone. I get that it's needed and I'm not arguing that. I wish we would have chosen some of the smaller projects to do in a year that we're already spending so much. I know that the road's going to deteriorate. I know that everything's going to get more costly, but that's true regardless of what we do. I, I wish we would have budgeted for this and I wish we would have planned differently for this. So I'm, I'm going to be a no.
We have trouble budgeting for it when we're doing our budget before we talk to the county on our worst roads. And that happens to be the worst road.
Yeah, I mean, we still budgeted 600,000.
Yeah, but a lot of it went to engineering, some of it did.
Mm-hmm.
Your, your brush spraying, which we didn't have to pay this year, your overband, your chip seal, your chloride, your, your mowing gravel shoulders, the Webster Road Project Engineering, drumheller stump removal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with any of those projects. We've just become a government that we set a budget and it means very little. We end up voting all of these things, we add architects here, we add road projects here. I don't mind doing that when I think it's important or necessary. And I don't mean to say this isn't important, but we, we got to budget better if we think we're going to spend more. If we're going to up our, our budget by, you know, half a million dollars before the end of the year, that means we're like, what is that, 25% off?
It's hard to know what's going to come up.
No, I know, but I think we should have just put it in the budget for more money then.
We can do that.
In the future. I mean, that's what we did, we already did this year, right? We put in 200,000. But it becomes, then we become a, we become the road committee. All we do is pay for roads.
We, you've got to decide, and this board has to decide, what is your priorities? Mine happens to be the police, the fire and the roads. The roads, everybody drives. And if you let these go back to gravel, I can remember the days when we drove our tractors to town because we couldn't get a car down the roads. And we would go back to that. That's why we had tamarack roads. Trying to keep them.
I would disagree with that statement. There's no way that you're gonna allow that to happen, not with this, not with any board that deals with what's good for our citizens, for their health and welfare.
No, I'm just saying, if we don't spend this money, it's gonna get, they're gonna get bad. You drive, you drove down that road.
Next year, or whenever you bring next amendment for it, I, believe it or not, Ryan, I have to agree with you.
That's great, welcome.
It's the second time, it's the second time that that's happened. It is, however, I also, I don't want to put these two together, your amendment puts these two together.
Motion does.
Yes, it does.
I can vote on separately.
Let's vote on it that way, the motion's there.
They should be voted on separately, whether you put 60,000, because when you start adding up, even your ARPA funds, you're absolutely correct, you're gonna start multiplying, for example, where'd I put it? Where'd I put it here? When we wanted the generator and cisteric to come in, that's 33,000, new generator was 8,000, so if you start, which we think is really, I think it's really important, that we go ahead and have an architect to focus on. So when you start adding all of this up together, it becomes quite large, and you do have to make a decision as to where you're at, but that decision comes at budget time, that decision doesn't come arbitrarily.
Let me speak to that.
Please do.
This process is backwards. I don't get any information from the contractor in time to put it in the budget. My budget has to be done in December, sometime in January, to get the information from the contractor as to what the costs are gonna be. It's backwards, and we know that, so we have to basically give it a number and then see what the projects come in and then decide what projects we're gonna have, and then expand to that number. And since I've been on this board, we've done that. This isn't anything new that we haven't done, it's just that as we have had these financial discussions over the years, things are starting to get a lot more money. And if this was a corporate organization, they'd be beating the drum on how much money the board has saved the community by getting these projects out of the way and doing what we've been doing, but we're not corporate, so we're not gonna beat the drum, okay? But the process that you, when you talk about budgeting is backwards. First you budget, and then you get your costs. And so that's how we've dealt with this in the years that I've been on the board.
I appreciate what you're saying, however, if you go from year to year, and you say it's backwards, then you look back and see what it cost you last year. And if that last year, you had to amend it three times because you didn't have enough money in your budget, wouldn't you automatically put that kind of money, because if I'm understanding fund balances, then what's not spent, you have left over, which in the roads, I hope you never have any left over, but.
From this year.
But the question, then, that should be applied to what we're looking at.
That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, so that's, and that's what I'm saying, if you look at last year's budget, then you look at this year's budget, that's what you think, so it isn't necessarily backwards.
It's.
No, it's not, well, backwards to the extent that we don't know what's gonna cost in 2024, but we sure as hell knows what it cost in 2023. So if you apply your 2023 numbers to your 2024, no matter how high or how low it may be, that's gonna give you within that range to be able to deal with. And I think what, what trustee Roscrans is trying to say is, if you have the money, you're gonna spend it, and roads are really important, and they are.
Yes, they are.
They are.
It's just like.
But this, no, I'm sorry, I, I have a problem.
I have a problem, you're not having a problem.
You can, you can call for the vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, how much in the 2022 budget was left from the roads that was unused?
Two hundred.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty-two was budgeted.
I don't have that number in front of me, it was in my last memo last time, but it was approximately, it was at least 200,000 dollars.
So we have 200,000 left over.
And you're looking at 376, you're looking at 176.
Well, that's the number.
No.
Yes, math-wise, but the money goes into the fund balance, it's not like we can carry it forward into a new budget.
Okay, so we're gonna.
I think Brian has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want you to tell me what your motion is again.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't have an issue with the, I think this is for 65,000, Karen. No, it's 60,000.
Six hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Six hundred and fifty-one dollars. For chlorine, boy, it's getting expensive, that's just a lot more money, folks, than it used to.
Sixty thousand, is that, okay.
Yeah, I can, I can separate these out.
Okay, thanks.
I can separate them all.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry, I know you called the question, but Karen, you said that we had 200,000 dollars left in the roads budget?
The amended roads budget, yes.
This shows that we had, we spent 250,000 more than the amended.
No, that probably doesn't include the budget amendments that were conducted.
Since when?
That's true.
After I presented the budget to you all.
This is through November 17th.
Doesn't, I don't know when the budget amendments were entered, but not necessarily at that time.
But you're saying that we, we reversed 450,000 dollars at the end of the year?
No.
So then how did we come up with 200 left?
I'd have to go get my memo from our previous board meeting.
It just doesn't add up.
I, I can tell you if you want me to get the document. The last large project that we did at the Meadows came in 200,000 dollars under budget. So there was at least 200,000 left over in roads.
If it showed in your activity through 11/17, that means that's been expended funds, right?
Marie, have Steve explain it to him.
I see that finger waving.
This is right, but for the sake of moving your calendar along here, you didn't amend your budgets to the fourth quarter till the 15th of December on purpose because you wanted to make sure we caught everything at the end.
Right.
And there is a significant saving to that, you didn't spend the energy, but the expanded, Webster Road, excuse me, project out there didn't come out of that this year, and it comes out this next year.
What, was it 450,000?
It is 450,000.
No.
It was 200,000.
You gotta look at the numbers, and here's the other thing.
Right, but you have to get 450 to get to the two.
Here, here's the other thing you gotta look at too, is you're, you're exactly spot on what you said, Ryan, your actual numbers for your, you don't even know what your fund balance is right now, you could have hit financial hardship in 2022, and until you have it, you won't know, but I can tell you it's favorable, it's extremely favorable, so, whether it's, I can't speak to your 400,000 dollars because I don't remember that off the top of my head, but the numbers run in on 15th, whatever day it was, that you was, you left, well, through on the date, that went in on that, I think it was 15th November, 18th or November, it was actually, that was here on 15th, and the, the number, all the amendments, it was a big dollar amount because of the Webster Road expansion, and Webster Road Engineering didn't come out of that.
I thought it was the Meadows, but.
It comes out this, thanks to your, as part of your, I went to the road committee before it left, and as part, as part of your road committee meeting, it was in the minutes of all the different numbers were in that document, well, we'll show you what exactly that is.
So I'm going to, I'm sorry. We went to an open meeting.
I saw a finger.
All right, any other discussion?
I'd like to know which one is being voted on first.
Oh, we're voting on or we read it?
Always.
Do you want me to do it again?
Yes, I need your first one.
My motion is to approve the road committee, or to approve the recommended completion of the milling fill added to the projects of the roads this year at Hawk Hollow. Is that good enough, Alan?
Yeah, second it. Also, remember that you're taking, you got another motion that you're gonna put 60,000 dollars on another one.
Yeah, we're gonna separate.
So that means this is 65,000 dollars less.
Correct.
The milling fill.
No, the chloride.
Chloride.
Chloride, we're taking, we're paying that on another.
I had budgeted 65 for Ms. Howe.
This is chloride, we're talking the milling fill.
This is the milling fill.
Yeah, this is the Hawk Hollow. No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Cowman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenzless?
No.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the chloride for this year, that 60,651.15 estimated cost by the county.
Second.
I'm just. I want you to second it.
Oh.
You're not fast enough, Alan, you're gonna be quicker.
A little slow.
Why is it?
Okay.
Ms. Feller-Chandler? Yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Cowman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenzless?
Yes.
Mr. Roscrans?
Yes.
We're on to the resolutions, and before we ask for a vote, I will repeat myself so that it's understood that March 6th is what I'm looking at to put the two of these resolutions, D and E, on Monday, March 6th, agenda. Twenty thirty-one.
Are you making the motion?
No. All I'm saying is, before the motion is made, I want to let you know that I would like to have these, so we're gonna be voting on them one at a time, correct?
Marie, are there questions that Karen could answer while you have them?
No. That should have been done long ago.
Well, I, I wanna honor your concern, you say you have questions, I think that's very reasonable, I think Karen could in all likelihood answer many of them, so if it would make you more comfortable about voting, you could get some of your questions answered.
No, I knew you'd say that, why did I know you'd say that? No, and the reason being is that I didn't have any formal requests or information, and as I am the chief assessor, that should be done, yes, should they come to me? Yeah, if that's what you're asking.
That isn't what I'm asking, I'm asking if you have questions, Karen could answer them.
And I'm saying no.
Okay.
Okay. So, any other discussion? Then you go ahead and take both.
Was there a second?
My motion, but I'll make a motion to approve Resolution D, no, it's not D anymore, it changed the letters.
Yeah, it's gonna be E and F.
What are the letters?
E and F.
D and F?
No.
E and F, okay, I'll make the motion to approve the resolutions, D and F.
Second.
Discussion, because I want you to make sure you're understanding what you're voting for. In your resolution, at the bottom, it says now, therefore, do you resolve that the batch on the township board of trustees shall, we all know what that means, allow local residents to protest in writing, so that means that a business that's not local, in other words, is not owned locally, for example, we use my room only because they're there, that any other business will not be able to apply or let them know, challenge, however you wanna put it, their property tax. Now, that also carries over, those, those are some, some small questions, that also carries over to your Resolution 23, 2023, three. And I, for one, I mean, I mean, there's a lot of questions I have to discuss, so I'm voting no, there's my statement.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
She's voting no against her.
Assessor Bakke stated, the changes to this resolution will allow both non-residents and residents to file a petition to the board of trustees by li, by letter, that's what she stated. What are you holding up?
I'm holding up a resolution.
Okay.
Because regardless of what was said, the resolution states shall allow local residents to protest in writing.
So are you looking to change this resolution to local and not local?
I want this put on March 6th so that that gives us a couple weeks to be able to look at it and determine what's going on.
Karen, do we know if this was originally for non-local? I'm looking at.
It's Resolution.
Okay.
Two oh, two-three-two. Two, two-three-three.
Right, which is these two?
Yes.
We're voting for them, are we?
I'm voting for it, the motion is to approve, huh?
Oh, okay, I got you. You're studying her?
Um, she's looking at the, what the law is.
I don't see anything in the law about non-resident taxpayers. Section eight only identifies resident taxpayers to file his or her protest before the board review by letter without a personal appearance by the taxpayer or his or her agent. And then we shall, if we adopt this, notice taxpayers of this option in each assessment notice. It doesn't say anything about non-residents.
Who do these come to?
Who do, what, the assessment notices?
No, the letters of protest regarding assessments.
The assessment, and then board review.
So do we think, do you think Beth is going to turn them away because of the language in this?
Well, wait a minute, as a resolution, absolutely, the resolution is very similar to an ordinance.
That's not what I asked, I said, do you think Beth is going to, she's gonna turn away these things? Because she told us last week that that's what it does.
But that's not what the resolution says, she follows the law in a resolution, now if that were to be changed.
So looking at, looking at that, looking at subsection eight, the statute says that the governing body, you guys, may authorize by resolution a resident taxpayer to file his or her protest before the board review by letter without personal appearance, so then that is tracking, the language in the resolution says, the board review meetings to include a statement that resident taxpayers may protest by letter, and therefore the board trustees allows local residents, which would be resident taxpayers, to repeat that to the exact same language, but it's fairly consistent, so the way I'm reading the resolution is that it's consistent with the statute provision for permissible methods of protest.
All right, explain to me then, while you're doing this, it's just an explanation. If you have, and I'll use lawyers again because they happen to be there, we know they're not residents, do they then, how, how do they then go to the tax tribunal if they're questioning what their tax or property tax would be, if they think it's too high or too low, always too high, how do they go to the tribunal if they're not allowed to put a letter in?
So there's different, there's different boards of review and timelines for resident tax appeals versus commercial tax appeals, and I think that might be the, the hook here.
Okay, so these resolutions, 23, 2023, two and three, deal with solely residents?
Correct.
So we would have to have a special resolution dealing with commercial?
If it's even permitted.
If it's.
Correct, it may well be, I'm not saying one way or another, I'm saying there would be a, the procedure that addresses commercial tax appeal would address whether and how they can protest by letter in a much, I mean, it would be a.
Okay, so again, I'm gonna ask if these be put on hold, I'll, I'll say things, I understand what you're saying, but because our. Okay, so again, I'm going to ask if these be put on hold, if they think, I understand what you're saying, but because our commercial and our tax tribunal, that avenue or that road is not being addressed. And simply because it says it's going to be, doesn't mean it will be. If in fact we do address it, then it should be included with this Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, four.
You can always do those down the road.
Oh, sure, that's what we always do, down the road. I want them together. I want to make sure that that's where we're going to be at, because I understand exactly what you're saying. If this is a resident, then that's what we deal with, residential, but I also want the commercial, if that's what you're saying. No, I'll shut up. Go ahead.
Um, I'll only remind you that this is an update for our township audit by the State Tax Commission, and these are part of their guidelines that they are providing to us. They are requesting this for their audit.
They are, but it doesn't have a date time on it. It's not time sensitive. So two weeks from now is not a big deal, but hey. You guys go ahead.
I'll call the question.
Any other discussion?
Are we going to keep them together?
Oh, might as well.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chalmers, yes.
Oh. I, yeah, I put this in the information for you guys. This is going to be Clinton County Broadband Task Force. And it actually comes out G, because we already have now, so this will be a G. This particular issue is one, and you guys heard our citizen, Mr. Almarigi, decide or discuss, give us a rundown of what's been happening. All this does is give you information as to what actually took place. When Ms. George initially contacted me, she was asking for a letter, and that is in your packet. It says she's reaching out, which she did, because she wanted to know what was happening. I asked for the resolution, and she was more than happy to send the resolution, because I wasn't sure exactly how they determined how they would develop the task force. This was the resolution, and you have a copy of that. The next page, actually page two, is when I asked for the, she's asking us for a formal letter stating that Mr. Almarigi is still representative of Bath Charter Township. So what I submitted to you, and this can be said, I don't know if we have to vote on this, I know it says, I can refer action, but I don't know, well, I guess you do. It's a very, very simple one sentence, and you have a copy of it. It says, "At this time, the Board of Trustees approves Mr. Jason Almarigi as the Bath Charter Township representative of the Clinton County Broadband Task Force."
Can you make that motion?
That's all it says. I will make that motion. That's all that it says. Oh, okay, now we have discussions.
Karen, have we actually sent any money to the county for this yet?
We have not.
So we could still hold off on that original two-hundred-plus K as well?
The letter intends, yes.
Okay. Great. I feel inclined to do that, since they're going to be serving zero Bath Township residents.
That will come to us, the Board of Trustees, okay, because I don't see that. We already have Broadband on the south end. What we're looking at is the north end with two other townships, but anyway, that's another discussion. So this is the letter that Ms. George is asking for us to send to her. So if I'm understanding, that's the second, so now we take a vote, okay?
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chalmers, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes, well, we agreed to that, so, Ms. Howe, we could do that. So I will send this out to her tomorrow so that she'll have it, and then she can give it to the commissioners so that they understand. Okay. Be on your, it goes out, it's very good. And we have the backup power. Superintendent, you'll read.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have in front of you a memo from myself. This was in discussion with the clerk and with the DPW Director, Bensy. I will point out to you that the Public Works Garage is not part of elections and voting, but while we are in getting the service for the backup power of the senior center, which is intended for use as an absentee counting board, I think, thank you, and as well as the BCC, which is a precinct of this township where we vote. It was cheaper to have all of them done at the same time for a cost of eight thousand dollars. In addition, a generator would also be needed to run those, excuse me, run the BCC if it were needed as it was, almost in the last election that we had in November of twenty-twenty-two.
Those were happened in November of twenty-twenty-two, about six of Bath House. And it didn't come on till twelve-thirty, one-thirty in the morning. So it brought to our attention that we need to do something to the buildings that we have.
That's five generators, right? Or is that just, you, the portable one you move?
The portable one.
So if two of them go out, you give, you have to choose?
We have one that we have on lease from J.D. Wissner and Associates.
Okay.
That we pay a retainer for to have, so we already have one that is available to us, so.
We'd actually have two.
So we would actually have two, okay.
That's a bigger one, right?
Correct, it would run like the township and the police department. It's a much larger one than.
But this isn't for a generator, is it?
It's for the electrical and, and.
Portable generator.
Okay.
So the larger generator obviously would stay here, the portable would go to what, five, whatever?
BCC or another building.
Another, and this says that these funds, this eight thousand dollars is going to come out of the general fund, fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we know that that general fund balance now is what, four million approximately?
Well, the general fund part of that is three million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three, until we get the new audit.
Yeah, so at this time, we know it's at least two-point-six million that we have. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Right. Twenty-twenty-one?
I'll make the motion to approve the installation of the generator R inlets in Bath, near the senior center and the Department of Public Works Garage and the purchase of a portable generator for the cost of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I didn't know we were voting on this, sorry.
Yeah, clearly, yes. So you're item of action? Or is that an induction? Hang on, I'll double check.
I'm happy to vote on it, I just, I'm sorry, I was taking a kilter here.
Introduction and discussion.
It's an induction, so we don't need.
I will send the voting.
I'm voting on either.
You gotta do it.
You gotta do it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Al, oh, sorry. No?
Second.
Thank you.
So it's your items, Fran, this is an item fraction. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chalmers, yes. Ms. Howe?
Also, yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the two of them?
Yes.
All right. Now which will be taken for, as T C. Now, these are, this is an item fraction, so we need to leave that. This has the staring letter of engagement.
Um, what you have in your packet, I summarized for you, but you have a proposal from Aaron Stevens of Mayor Costerison to provide additional services to the township. Treasurer, former treasurer, Wisswasser, now county treasurer, Wisswasser, I invited him here tonight. He's worked with Mayor Costerison for many years, probably most of the time that he was in office. In case there were any questions, Aaron Stevens is not able to be here tonight. What you have in front of you is an estimate for transitioning of the general ledger to the clerk's office for a cost of nine thousand and twelve thousand dollars. That is just one item of the three. The second, two items, the process and review of best practices was what Ms. Bethany Frable that came with Aaron Stevens and Brad Taylor spoke to last time, and that's assessing what we do here in the office when it comes to our internal controls. And then the training and general assistance of a cost of nine thousand dollars would be to help us implement any additional services they identify that we might need during that time they're reviewing our best practices.
Yes.
I have several questions. Uh, as I read this, Karen, it looks like it's an hourly contract.
Correct.
Are we guaranteeing them this max amount, or they would charge us hourly until they hit the max?
They would charge us that amount, and knowing them, I don't think they would hit the top, but they would at least, they're saying at least nine thousand dollars to provide those services for us.
But if they did hit the top, they couldn't keep charging without a amendment?
No, and we would, and we would be, they're very prompt with their billing, so we would know on an as-you-go basis what was being spent and where.
Who determines what level of staff is assigned to each task? Their, their range in costs is very large, which is typical for an accounting firm. There's nothing inappropriate about that. But I'm just wondering, is it, they do that? Do we do it in concert?
It would be in conjunction with us. We have a young man that assists us with monthly reconciliation, obviously makes a lesser rate than other people. Bethany Frable, I would have to assume, would be a larger amount for her services, but I can't see once that part of that was done that they would continue with that level of service if there's someone else that can provide the service for us.
Like if Aaron's like, I'm going to do this all, you could be like, not at three hundred and eighty dollars an hour. Okay, uh, on the second piece, the best practices review, I was a little surprised by that dollar amount. I had the same thing done at my, uh, months ago, and it was just five thousand dollars, so this is double that. So I know they're not here to talk about it, but that is something I have a question about how, why that's expected to be so much. And then my last question, and this is sort of Jennifer to you, but you might not know the answer. I know this is dealing with sort of the accounting piece, but are you getting any support on the statutory pieces of your role? Like the other things that don't actually have anything to do with accounting?
Yeah, I mean, I can contact them at any time, so.
Okay.
Aaron, I can only speak to what has happened in the past, but there were several times when treasurer Wisswasser, or I would have a question, would contact Aaron or Dane Porter, who's assigned to the township, and talk with them through a scenario and what was the best way to proceed. So there will, I anticipate there will be times, but those things are generally covered under our contract we already have in place with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Why do we have this if we already have contracts?
This is in addition to.
This is in addition to a contract that we already have.
A standard where they come into our financial statements, our reconciliations.
Because they were, I mean, I have emails from them every week with regards to activities that they had. So I, I do question, maybe Steve can answer this. Aren't you glad you came?
I'm getting paid here.
I'm sure you are. That I never questioned.
You're spending my day.
I never, never questioned that. You will not be paid, goodness of your heart, to be here. Now, my question for you is, how long have they been involved with us?
Whoops.
Okay.
We know, see, it's.
We know, I know your answer.
Good evening. Stephen Wisswasser, President, eleven-four-four-four, up the phone.
You don't have to give that, but we know.
I also have to be the county treasurer.
Yes, you do.
Um, I was in this job here for twenty-one years, as a matter of fact, I've worked here. I've been here since nineteen ninety-six, I'm originally, with a brief absence, as you all know, I was on three years. Our relationship with Mayor Costerison has only been for maybe about two years, because Mayor Costerison, previously that was SKT. And prior to SKT, there was Abraham Gaffney. My first relationship I had was with Mike Gaffney, and Aaron Stevens was a auditor, a senior auditor with the firm at that point in time. He assisted us, which when we hired him when I got elected in two thousand, we determined we wanted to change our uniform charter of accounts, or in our computer programs to BSNA software, which we entered into an agreement, but we was a test site for the, one of the first accounting software people. They, before that, all they did was tax and assessing, and they got into accounting, which now they do about ninety-five percent of the state of Michigan municipalities as far as accounting. But he, he was experienced in doing this, and he worked with, with Mike Gaffney and Abraham Gaffney, and I hired him in two thousand, and we had a guy by the name of John Ireland, who was, or Jim Ireland, excuse me, who was our auditor at that time, and he'd been here for about thirty years, I think, and maybe a little less than that. But he was getting ready to retire, so we hired Aaron to come in and oversee the implementation of the BSNA software system and everything that we needed to do to get our new charter accounts up and running in Buckhead. We purchased that, incidentally, about three years before I got here, but nobody ever wanted to deal with it, so we implemented it in two thousand. After that, like I said, he, he stayed on for, and he was our auditor after that, but he, he was there. We couldn't have the auditor do the change at the time because they were, that's not a conflict of interest, so we had Jim do that. Jim came back one year for two thousand one. He told me, the first thing he told me when he got here in two thousand was, he introduced himself, and I was a brand new secretary, he says, I'm just, I'm here to do the audit, and I'm done this year, I won't be back. And so I had Aaron, was working on things. I was familiar with Mr. Stevens because he was at the Utility Authority, the Southern Click County Utility Authority, and I, I worked with him over there as well, had a long history with there as well. But anyhow, that, that's how long he's been here for you, that was your question, and he's came with, with the program all along. Eventually, they split off from Abraham Gaffney, they went out on their own from SKT, and then they went from SKT, they got bought up and made it to Costerison, who is the largest accounting firm there is in state of Michigan right at this moment. We changed and got away from them being our auditors back in two thousand seven, because the Municipal Finance Act changed, and if you had a township who was SEV over three hundred and fifty million dollars, you need to have a non-staff CPA or a accounting firm on staff to take and review you quarterly. And that's what we, we brought them in, did that, at the same time, with township, did the same thing. Uh, we changed it over, and we brought in another auditing firm, I can't remember what their name is, it started with, was it Franklin or something like that? But, but, and then in two thousand eight, obviously, I was gone, and then you guys, had some other people that came along, but you maintained with Mayor Costerison or SKT or Aaron Stevens. He's been your lead accountant, lead person with them, you've had since basically two thousand. I'm going to speak just real quick about this, I don't know why you, you, well, it's probably not, but you asked me to talk, so I'm going to talk.
I didn't, I don't have to ask you, go ahead. Have it.
You, you amended your budget, and I mean nothing by this, you amended your budget this year for, in the legal expenses world, in the, in the world of cannabis, and, and, and right in the margin of, I believe it was around forty, forty, forty-eight thousand dollars is what you spent on doing that this year. You take and make this, so you did things right, you did things legally, you made sure that everything was the way it ought to be, and frankly, honestly, I think this year, I think you've made maybe, you may have made fifteen thousand, but I don't think, I think you made ten thousand dollars is what you made in revenue in that business this last year. And look at it this way, this thirty-three thousand dollars you're going to spend, this is not just for today, this is not just for this budget cycle, this is for the next two years. Forty-two years, this township was run with the treasurer, being keeper of the general ledger, and doing the treasurer's side and doing everything else, just like a city would operate as finance director, that's not a compliance. That's out of compliance with what the township statute says. We had to do things, that's why we had to have people like Painter do bank reps, because I couldn't do bank reps to do all that stuff. So, I mean, this is something that should have been done a long time ago, you had a clerk that was here for thirty-nine years, bless her heart, she did a great job, but she didn't want nothing to do with it, and the person before her didn't have anything to do with it. I was, out of forty-two years, I was here for twenty-one of them, and we got things done, we got it done right, we got good audits, we did what we needed to do, and took care of business. But this thirty-three thousand dollars is good money that's spent here, because it's not only going to help, I heard Ryan say, is it going to help Jennifer with her statutory duties? That's the thing that's going to be the greatest about it, because it's been so long since you've had the treasurer by statute in this place. I can't, I can't even myself, as a treasurer, can't tell you exactly what duties are and aren't, I have to go back and look and see to do it myself. So, I mean, it would illustrate now what you got going on, and it's a good thing, it's money well spent. Your taxable value in this township is five hundred and four million dollars, that's all your taxable units and everything in this township, second highest in county, what's the six hundred do? But the thing with this, you know, if you can spend that kind of money taking and doing legal things, that they can allow things like the cannabis industry and things like that, then you ought to sure well be able to spend that kind of money to help the residents of the township. There's plenty of people in this township, I don't care if they got fifty thousand dollars a year home, they deserve to have things done right for their taxes. And that's, that's my spill on that. Is it expensive? It's expensive to go buy eggs today. You know, no matter what you do today is expensive. You guys are making history here, you're moving forward. Now, there's, there's those who will say that you need to hire a finance director. My comment to that, I respect their opinion a hundred percent, but they ought to walk in the shoes of a township treasurer or a township clerk, that's what they ought to walk in the shoes of, because that's, that's the thing, it needs, that's the people who are responsible by statute. And until they do that, they don't, they can't really understand how much there is here to learn and how much there is to do. And if you give them an opportunity to be shown how to do this, then you have no excuse of not saying that anyway, come, you didn't do your job, because that's what you go here, you're allowing them to do their job and be taken care of. I, the reason why I'm the county treasurer today is because of everything I've learned here. It's not, it's not anything else, it's just I took an interest in it. So I'm not saying that I didn't get treated well by doing both jobs here for all these years, but it's, interestingly enough, I've been on the job up there now four whole days, I'm quite a seasoned person, but I'm finding that this is quite a little bit different. You got about three more digits than the numbers up there we've got down here. But it's, it's a difference, one of the greatest things I see daily, the finance director up there, and I have got, and we talk about it quite a little bit, is I don't have to do a lot of stuff anymore. But there's plenty of other stuff to do.
I was just going to say, I think there's, yeah, a quick question for you. Thank you for coming, whether you get paid or not, I don't care, I'm just glad you're here. So you never had this opportunity. Am I understanding that? Okay.
No, I had, I inherited the job from Tom King, he died forty-six days before his term, and I worked for free, Karen and I have talked about this, I worked for free, because I was a treasurer-elect for them days, and got things up and rolling, and I, that's when we started all this stuff with Mayor or Aaron Stevens at that time, was Abraham Gaffney. But, I mean, this was, I'm here tonight because I care. That is what comes down.
Not that you're getting paid, but care.
I care, I care about our community. I care about our community.
Yep. Okay, no, you answered my questions, yep. I appreciate that.
Is there any, any other questions?
I have one more question for Karen. You're welcome to answer, but I think Karen has it.
I want to make a statement, then I want to slip out of here, because I got an early meeting.
Early meeting?
I'll just say this, if you guys get a chance, oh, and I liked what somebody else said earlier, and I like what Jason Almarigi said, if you get a chance to thank your first responders, your police officers, your paramedics, your firefighters, like them, because the other night, and I know, because I have it with my family, obviously, the first picture I seen on Tuesday morning after staying up late and seeing, seeing everything on Monday night, was a picture of my son and three other combat guys going in to shake down Union Hall. And, you know, on USA Today, I looked at my phone, and there was my son.
Pretty cool.
Well, equal, but thank them for their services, and thank them, be respectful, don't thank you, because it's a big deal. They have to take this stuff home at night when they're all done. Lots of us don't have to, we can shut the TV off, we can do whatever we want, they can't do that. I'm good with that, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for coming.
I ain't long yet.
I just wanted to say thank you.
I'll let you how you will.
Any other?
Yes.
Is there an end date on this?
There's not, it's, it's the project work to be done. So the transitioning, and then the risk assessment, and the, and the others would be the work that would be conducted. So no, there's not an end date, but I don't anticipate it extending past the end of this fiscal year, for, for these services.
Okay.
Okay, that it? Oh, you got one more?
Yeah. I'd like to make the motion to approve engagement of Mayor Casterson, and allow the superintendent to execute the acceptance of the contract for the following services for a cost of thirty-three thousand dollars.
Second. Beat you.
He was watching you. I think she wanted a second. All right, you ready for a vote?
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyway, all right, so we are at a closed session. I'm not sure I understand two closed sessions, but apparently we do. How do we do this? Do you want us to go one, come back, and then go to the second? No, I believe we can do both. No?
I recommend entering into one.
Thank you.
Exiting.
And then come back. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Because that's usually the way it's done. So we have a closed session, under the Open Meetings Act, permissible, I don't know what purpose H is, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure session.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm new at all of this, and so my question is, can I get to the board?
Okay.
Do all of us on the board, not you, because you're organizing a lot of this, I understand, do we all have the same info going into this meeting, or do some of us know more of, I mean, I don't know anything about any of it.
I have not shared any documentation with anybody, have not discussed this with anybody, so I, other than it's to go in and discuss a new contract for the fire chief.
Okay.
I guess I'm.
So you're both together. In my mind, unless there's other things that have occurred, you're all on the same page.
All right. All right.
I have been for two fire chiefs, and I have been for two police chiefs. So I have gone through this, and we do the same one every time. This isn't, this isn't something.
I guess my question goes to both B and C.
Yeah.
Mix.
Okay. We'll take one at a time. Yeah, we'll take one at a time. Trying to get it. We need a moment. Okay. To go into closed session.
Pardon? To go into closed session.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, I'm in the motion.
Okay.
Seconded. To go into closed session.
So now we need it? Oh, to go in.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzey?